Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brisbane City Council Special Meeting. We're having a study session on March 16th, and this is regarding the Brisbane Baylands Planning Applications. And the topics include other environmental issues, biological resources, cultural resources, geology, soils, seismicity, hydrology, recreation, energy, and related policy issues. Universal Paragon Corporation is the applicant. So I just want to remind everyone that while this study session is open to the public, the primary purpose is for the city council to ask questions on the agenda topic, and public comment is encouraged at the 7:30 public hearing following this meeting. Okay? So let's go topic by topic, and each of us can have a chance to ask questions. So Madison, would you like to start?
Uh, I'm writing all my questions right now.
Okay. Would anyone else like to start? So let's start, let's see, what order could we, we can go in, let's go in the order of the staff report. Let's go with energy first.
I could, I could go.
Okay.
Yeah, if you don't mind, because I, it's going to be real quick on this. John, and I guess Lloyd. So a lot of things, a lot of technology is changing real fast in the energy market, and I know we took this a couple years ago, right, as to what it is. And this is what the data presented itself, I mean, from the study from the National Research Laboratory, and that, but with the technology and energy, there's so much investment being put towards it that it's really rapidly changing things, and the cost of PEVs and the efficiency of PEVs or PV, you know, photovoltaic, electric, is coming down dramatically. The same with wind energy. So I mean, I don't know, much for staff to comment about that, but it's just something that I wanted to comment on, that, you know, when we're looking at how much it would, the site would generate, regardless of what the scenario is, it's probably going to be a lot more, you know, than, than-
Per acre.
Yeah, per acre than what we currently studied. Okay. So I just, that's more of a comment and a personal observation that I've made through this monitoring the industry and stuff, so. And would you concur with that, that that's probably true? Yeah, okay. All righty. That's really kind of all I have on energy, as far as the questions.
Okay. Who would like to go next on the topic of energy? Madison, are you ready?
I don't, most of my questions were from, I didn't ask last time, related to windsurfing.
Okay, we're going to get to that later.
Yeah, I just had a question for staff. So I was a little bit confused because when I went back to the readings that were noted for today, four out of the five sections I already read for other meetings. So I think I asked questions related to those topics then, except when we, when last time I realized that even though windsurfing was in the material that I read for last meeting, it's actually corresponding to this meeting. So was I messing up the whole time and asking questions I wasn't supposed to for that? Or are we kind of going back to some of the same topics? Because I was like, oh, there's so much reading. And then I looked and I was like, I've read all this already, so I don't have a lot of questions, because I've already seemed to ask them all.
Yeah, I think what happened was the way they were divided up for the planning commission's review and grouped weren't the same way we chose to group them for the council. And I guess I apologize for any confusion that, that created. For example, you know, there was geology and hydrology were lumped in with hazardous materials, which in a way makes sense, but given how much time was spent when we went to the planning commission just on hazardous materials, we knew we couldn't get through all those items in a single evening, so we had to re-divide it. I think to the point that you, you know, there was overlap, right, when you talk about hazardous materials and how groundwater may be affected or whatnot, so I don't, I don't think there's any loss or any problem with doing that. I think we had a lot of conversation about how these issues are somewhat related, and tonight if there are other issues that are standalone, for example, surface water, we didn't spend a lot of time talking about surface water, and how that's treated and managed, and, you know, so. So there is a little bit of overlap, and I certainly apologize for any confusion it caused.
I just wanted to get clarification, because I know last time I was going to go talk about windsurfing, but then it was not, we weren't talking about that. So I was like, oh, I really feel like most of my questions got answered, because when I read that, those topics, if I had a question, I already read all the material. So I'll just make sure to ask the stuff that's relevant for tonight that we didn't already talk about, but I just wanted a clarification and make sure that, just that I understood it correctly. Okay.
And we will get to that.
So come back, come back to me for windsurfing.
For sure. Okay.
And Laurie, could I just clear something up?
Sure.
Because I call it National Research Lab, but it was National Renewable Energy Laboratory, NREL, so I just want to, I knew you knew what I was talking about, but I misspoke it.
Okay. Cliff?
Okay, I'll start. Okay, let's see. You know, on page two, the staff report, in the first paragraph in the middle, you know, it talks about the, you know, the summation that operational energy consumption following site remediation construction would be typical of similar uses within the Bay Area. So, you know, of course, the specific plan was submitted quite a few years ago and organized farther back until, you know, Title 24 requirement, housing, you know, being ZNE and, you know, and then by 2020. So that's only, that's less three years, or say, three years away, and then commercial being 2030. You know, if we were to implement, you know, those standards, say UPC was okay with implementing those standards, I mean, we would have a much different energy consumption standard in the Bay Area as a whole.
Correct.
Okay. So also on that same, that same page, the next paragraph down, renewable energy generation alternative is the only scenario or alternative that would generate more energy than is needed to serve onsite users. Then it goes on to talk about the framework, sustainability framework, you know, envisions that the Baylands will produce its entire annual energy needs. So, you know, the framework has these, you know, great goals, but of course, you know, you want those goals to, you know, be real. So, you know, the, you know, the energy, I mean, the, you know, the buildings, if they're built to be very, very efficient, you know, their, their energy needs are not as great as, say, this building, or the buildings that you see, other, other buildings in Brisbane. So, you know, how do we, how do we apply those standards in, and also just understanding the energy needs for that site if, if we have these goals in our framework, and how do we apply them to eventually, for planning for the site?
Yeah, I think there's a couple, you know, issues here, and I think it's a tension we've had on and, on and off as we discussed the EIR. Is it, EIR is kind of doing a do no harm sort of analysis, not an aspirational what can be achieved on the site. So that's, you know, the basic question is, you know, we asked in the EIR, is it, is it demonstrating that energy is going to be used in a quote unquote wasteful manner? And again, you assume they're going to comply with building code and provisions for energy code, that again, you answer that very low bar, that no one's going to be wasting energy when they do this. So I think that idea of that increment between what you want to achieve, that's above and beyond the state requirements for, you know, whether it's- aspirational kind of policies you can, you can incorporate into the general plan.
You can incorporate those into the general plan.
Exactly. And then, you know, again, how they're implemented through a final specific plan or other discretionary permit is going to be dependent on what that final plan, what the mix of uses is, what the land use program is, et cetera.
Okay. No, no, that's good. You know, a lot of the, you know, alternative energy generation, you know, focus, focuses on, on solar, and of course, that would be, you know, the largest contributor. But, you know, we've also talked about anaerobic digestion, and, you know, we have recology in the Baylands. As far as I know, they're, they're not looking to build an anaerobic digester similar to what we see at the South San Francisco Scavengers.
Cliff, could you move the microphone closer? I'm not sure if you can capture them all that good.
All right.
I'm not sure, is it on?
I guess it's on now. Okay. Yeah, you're right. Sorry about that.
Recology had proposed as part of their modernization program, a fairly extensive energy capture program. Some of it was actually running their entire fleet on gas that they would produce out of, out of the solid waste coming through the facility, running the facility itself, zero net energy. But until there's actually an application in front of you and a specific plan to review, it's just a concept. So they would have, could have a major reuse program that would be actually net generation, even, they've shown some figures that they could get there. They've also shown a more minimal program that had, was just about zero energy use and some, that had some net energy.
That's not part of this EIR.
Correct.
Yeah, no, exactly. My, what I'm getting at is that, you know, the city could, you know, if that's something that we wanted to do, you know, have its own urban biomass facility that, you know, turned the organic waste into energy. You know, as part of a development agreement with recology, we could require a certain portion of their organic waste to come to that facility. If that was something that we wanted to do, I mean, that's, you know, later on down the line, just, you know, I just want us to think about other forms of alternative energy. You know, how do we get to that, you know, energy neutral, or how do we get to energy positive? And, you know, doing it in a different way, rather than, say, if it's just solar panels, you know, solar farm. So on the third page, you know, it talks about, you know, lead gold. Council, though, could, could apply for mitigation measures, 4.0 P-2A to be platinum, if that's something that we wanted to do, or incorporate that into the overall sustainability framework.
Well, that becomes part of a policy decision you're going to have-
Okay.
-at the end of this, where you would look at what are, what is the energy goal for the Baylands? Is it essentially, do, meet all the requirements, something better than that, net, you know, net zero energy, energy positive? And there's a lot of variables involved, and that will become part of the incorporation if the council decides to go that way, incorporating the sustainability framework. What are your goals? What is it you want your general plan to say in relation to energy use in the Baylands?
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to address that later on in the meeting. You know, at the bottom of the page, you know, it talks about the study that was done by National Renewable Energy Laboratory. So when was that study performed?
A little bit, I think it was 12 or 13. I think it was 13, but I'm not totally sure.
All right. And then I'm curious to know, you know, and I'm sure it's a very logical reason, you know, why the cost of remediating, for remediating the site was not developed into the, you know, feasibility of, of that study, for having solar-
Yeah, I think part of the issue was, again, as EPA and NREL staff, they didn't have a lot of familiarity of what the cap closure requirements would be for Calif, per California landfill. First of all, they didn't understand what the requirements are, so they weren't able to factor that into their, their kind of modeling of the, the economic performance.
Yeah, I mean, you know, to me, it just, it makes sense. I mean, if that, if that is an option that the council decides to do, I mean, we really need to understand what's the economics behind it. I mean, we need to have the site remediated properly. We want it to be safe. Right now, it isn't safe, or is as safe as it should be, but those are costs. So I mean, all those things really, you know, do need to be factored in, so.
If I could jump in there. So we're going to be studying economic feasibility, so will feasibility of a solar production site, would that be included in that topic, which I believe is the next meeting?
When we went through this with the planning commission, our, the folks who did our feasibility study and our economic analysis are not necessarily that conversant in the economics of solar farms. That's not kind of a niche that they, they work in. So they weren't able to provide any information to the planning commission in that regard. I mean, so we used, pretty much, the NREL study as sort of a, a very high level sort of check, that yes, it, you know, it's arguably feasible. I think there's an assumption that whatever, if you go with the program that includes a substantial component, you know, the council, I would suspect, would want to look at that in detail to understand what its feasibility and is, but we haven't gone through that exercise.
So will that NREL study, is that included as one of the attachments in the materials for that meeting? If not, can it-
It's on, it's online. We can certainly give you a link to it.
Okay. If you could, that would be helpful.
City's website.
Yeah, no, that, that would be good. That's it for me.
Thanks. Terry?
It is a little difficult negotiating this when the planning commission document is totally different than the staff report, and then the listing of the topics, we're taking, we're taking in a different order than what's on the listing of topics. So when energy's the last item and we're discussing it first, things aren't in the same order as the questions that are listed, so that makes it a little difficult to, to plan how you're going to ask your questions.
Sure. I'm just going by the order of the staff report for this meeting, which has energy first.
Correct. And we're doing it in one group instead of asking all our questions, which is what we did the last meeting. So we're changing-
When we get, no, I think the city manager suggested that we do it this way for the study session, but when we get to the council meeting following this, we'll have it all mixed in, and public comment will be all together.
Okay. Well, it's just hard to know what format we're using for which items we're going to be discussing.
Okay.
And it would be nice to keep it consistent-
Sure.
-so that the public knows where to listen in, and I know where to, how to list my questions out.
Okay.
Instead of grouping them by section by section, because I have them more in a different way. But, so, let me get to, I will work off of the staff report then, instead of the other method. So one of the questions I have that I would like the developer, or the applicant, I should say, or staff to come back with, is they have listed that they plan to do a lot of rooftop solar in the DSP and DSPVs to offset their energy usage, and from what I've seen in the past with developments of larger buildings, there's no room for rooftop solar because of the HVAC. And so I'm wondering how they intend to utilize that and, and create the renewables that they anticipate. I know that out at the Baylands, or excuse me, at Sierra Point, we couldn't even get a firm figure for a parking garage, much less any kind of energy generation on- a firm figure for a parking garage, much less any kind of energy generation on the actual buildings themselves, because they didn't know what the end use would be, so they didn't know what the HVAC systems would be required on the rooftop. So, I'd like to see how they would anticipate addressing that in theirs. So, that's the staff report. And then, on the Title 27 landfill closure, they don't take into account the energy use for the actual landfill closure, and what those construction activities would be, and it seems that, and I've asked for a preliminary Title 24 closure plan previously, and I'm hoping that the staff is coming back with that information and what the energy usage of that would be. So, I think that it's important to find out what the energy usage is for remediating or dealing with the actual on-the-ground heights and amounts of dirt that is going to need to be moved. And, in that same vein, on the landfill closure, in the staff report, well, I think it's the staff report for the city, for the Planning Commission, it talked about where Title 27 would be required for a development scenario, and I would like the staff to come back with an answer to when Title 27 closure would not be necessary, under what uses Title 27 would not be needed, and the resulting energy use. So, I think that's my questions on the energy use right now.
Okay, thank you. So, I had two questions. So, we talked about rooftop solar versus a solar field, and my question is, was that at all studied in the EIR, the different, the differential impact of having rooftop solar versus a solar field on the ground, the, you know, the environmental impact? Was that discussed? It wasn't in the staff report, but I don't know if it was in the actual EIR, and if so, where would we?
There's really not a difference.
Okay.
The difference being, the solar field would be 50 or 100 feet higher than ground level.
Okay.
And so, the impacts that occur in relation to bird strike are really the building.
Okay.
But the panels are the same, the impacts of the panels are the same. There would be some effect on the structural, structure for the building, carrying the weight of solar, of solar panels, but physical impacts are really no different.
Okay. And then, my second question is regarding Peninsula Clean Energy, so I'm a board member on that, and our, the executive director had reached out to me because she knew we were studying energy usage, and she wanted to see, you know, what, if anything, their organization's role would be at this point in the process. And, you know, and my, what I'm wondering is, what impact do our decisions here have on any potential future use of the Baylands for solar, for Peninsula Clean Energy? That may be outside the purview of this, but I, I just wanna, my understanding is that, you know, this is a separate process we're going through, and, you know, their role is not really here. They can certainly, you know, listen and provide input if they want, but, you know, they, you know, they're looking for local solar projects, and they, they know that the Baylands is a large, you know, site that has, you know, potential for solar production. So, when we're going through the decision-making process here, are there any things that we need to keep in mind if we are interested in potentially having that be a use for Peninsula Clean Energy?
Well, I think, again, maybe it starts getting into a fundamental, part of your decision is the land use decision, so.
Right.
If you choose to reserve a certain amount of acreage for solar or other alternative energy, if your decision is predicated on having someone who's interested in either generating that or operating it, you know, that I assume is something you'd wanna know as part of your land use decision, if they're happy to harvest energy off buildings versus a farm, I mean, we could certainly have some conversation with PCE. I, I'm not familiar with kind of their, their model, their business model of how they acquire their power or generate it, so, you know, we'd have to understand that a little better to help, if that, if that's something the council needs to further your decision-making, we can certainly work on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any other questions on energy?
You know, I just have one quick one. Laurie? So, you know, Terry brought up, you know, the issue about the buildings and being able to meet their energy needs. In the, in the framework, there are a couple of examples of some multi-story buildings, but I would like if staff can bring back some examples of multi-story buildings that are, you know, producing their own energy, or perhaps, you know, producing excess energy, and, you know, just being able to showcase that at a, at a future meeting. Thank you.
Wouldn't that presentation from One Planet, that he had some really good examples that he brought for that, right?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure if he did or not, I think he talked more about his own, you know, One Planet living system, but perhaps he did.
Because the build, there is the flagship one that he lives in, that's, well, that's obviously residential, but I think it's also mixed, there's mixed use, and they generate, I think, more energy than they utilize, so, but that might be, obviously, you know him really well, John, but that, that might be a good resource, or if, if it's not through One Planet, they probably know a bunch of other buildings. That would be really good examples. They, what's interesting is that, like, there are so many other things that they incorporate that you may not necessarily think of, because that's just their whole mindset.
It is a mindset.
Not just, like, with energy, but water, and how they incorporate that into the gardens that they have, and living roof, and all those cool things, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Anyway, I just remembered from that, we sat together during that presentation, and I just thought that came to mind, so, might be good.
Okay, anything else on energy usage before we move on? Nope? Okay. All right, let's move on to recreation, which includes parks, windsurfing resources, and the impacts of windsurfing. Madison, you had said you had questions on windsurfing? I mean, we can take any, any of the topics and under recreation, so, we could start with someone else?
Yeah, come back to me.
Okay?
Okay.
Who'd like to go first?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I just have one. You know, on the city ordinance in 1982 that was passed, and I'm gonna go from the staff report here on page four, and it's ordinance 282, and it talks about that dedication of parkland or payment of in-lu fees to be based on three acres for each thousand population, assuming 2.35 persons per dwelling unit. We know that's kind of changed, the person per dwelling, and I think it's down to 2.1, but this is what our ordinance says right now, currently. So, on the thousand population, if at some point, if we amended the general plan to allow for housing units, and you have that ratio, is that in this or not, analysis, you know?
The EIR analyzes application of the Quimby Act to the developer-sponsored plan of the residential there. Even if we separate out open space from parks, there's adequate parkland for the residential population. The questions that came up in the EIR review had to do with why the assumption that non-residential use doesn't need any park, parkland. And so, there is a discussion that there is some park use that comes out of non-residential uses. However, the Quimby Act is for residential, and you could use your general plan authority to discuss parkland for non-residential uses. The kinds of parks that non-residential uses would tend to use would be organized sports fields, particularly softball, softball leagues are very popular, and lunchtime activities, trails, and so on. So, you would have the ability through your general plan policies to look at parkland and recreation facilities for non-residential use.
Okay. And, let me finish now, and then, on the existing population, is that tied into this, or no?
The way existing population is tied in, the Quimby Act permits cities to require up to five acres per thousand of parkland dedication or payment of fees. However, if your city has less than three acres per thousand existing, all you're allowed to require is three acres.
Okay. And how many acres do we have?
It's less than three.
Less than three?
Yes.
Total? I mean, is that?
Less than three per thousand, not less than three.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, thank you, I'm, go ahead.
I was gonna jump on that, Clay, I was gonna ask a follow-up question. So, actually, I have two. So, Quimby Act, does that also, what governs, is that also kind of what governs libraries? Like, I think last time we were looking at some of this, it said for residential, there would be enough to require a library, but for just a working population, there wouldn't be enough usage on, like, say, lunchtime hours to warrant the need for libraries? That, that come from the Quimby Act also?
No, the Quimby Act is specific to parkland dedication, it's part of the subdivision map act.
Okay.
So, when you get into dedications of other public facilities, then you have basic rules regarding nexus. Is there a nexus between the need created by the project and the requirement? Then there is ABC 1600, which is how long can you hold fees for, and, you know, you can collect fees, but you have to commit their, their use. So, there's a series of laws, but Quimby is solely for recreation.
Okay. And then, going off of that, you mentioned fields that weren't necessarily for, like, I think, a little bit more business-oriented is kind of how I was thinking about it. I actually met with somebody a long time ago, when I was campaigning, and he had said that his sons are in baseball leagues, little leagues, and there is a field complex, I don't know if it's in Melpitas, or, I'm not sure, but it's, it's, okay, and it's, I think, four little baseball fields, but they're designed to look like Wrigley Field and really famous baseball stadiums, but they're, you know, quarter of the size, let's just say. And they're always booked out solid with all sorts of competitions and things like that, and they have even, the police officers will play in a league, and they're just booked out all the time, people come from all over the place, because it's really one of the only things like that in our area. And I think that a lot of people fly in from other states for these sorts of competitions, and it's really popular, and their hotels in the area are booked out constantly, so.
They've got Swim Creeps.
Is it? I'm not sure the name. So, so this man was saying that in San Francisco, a lot of the fields, there's not a lot of them, because the land obviously is very precious, and people want to use it for housing. And so, the fields that are available, a lot of times, they're completely booked out, and so, he said the Baylands might be a really great place for something like that. So, can you, you can put that in as something that's desirable, that you'd like to see, say, you said softball fields, but anything, like, maybe it's soccer fields, or it's a baseball field, that's something that you, you can?
Yeah, I think, again, the council, you have an option here, that's, there was someone actually who met with the city a number of years ago called Big League Dreams, and they have.
Oh, somebody came here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was just speaking to a parent of a kid at BES, so, he had mentioned something like that.
And they look at it as probably the land use category of commercial recreation, and, you know, there can be joint use and, and public use as well, but they operate pretty much as a business venture. And again, if the council wants to devote lands in the Baylands for commercial recreation, you know, whether it's that form, or a driving range, or this or that, those are all kind of forms of, of commercial recreation the council could designate land for.
I know, like, this company from Europe, I think, I don't know if they approached you, Clay, they spoke to my dad about, like, a revolutionary type of skiing setup, where you can ski in any type of weather.
Indoors.
But, no, it's outdoors, but it's with some water technology, and so, I just, and they had also mentioned the Baylands, but I just didn't understand how, how that, how you would navigate making that, something that is possible. So, you just have that be zoned for commercial recreation? Okay, great.
Good questions.
Okay. So, that, you know, the recreation part, you know, I see that as public benefits, you know, things for, for the community. So, you know, so the last meeting, we talked about the libraries, and we were talking about parks, and Lloyd just said that the parks also can mean trails, so you could have these, these corridors, these linear parks. Things like museums and gymnasiums, and, I mean, I guess these would also kind of fall in that, that realm of potential recreation desires from the council?
Museum, probably not, but there are a number of commercial recreation kinds of things that are child-oriented. Indoor, I don't know if I can describe it, it's an indoor playground with a two-story building, and kids can climb everywhere, and they're kind of limited by age as to where they can go, but there's some really amazing activities, like, you see them more on the East Coast.
You know, Chrissy Field.
Or parks and not year-round.
If you go down to Chrissy Field, and you've got one facility after another, I mean, it's awesome.
We have them here, too. I'm familiar with them.
The jungle that went out of business, but that was the place.
Yeah. There's, like, Peekaboo Factory, Pump It Up, I mean, those are, you know, indoor bounce house.
Or safari, safari run.
Safari run.
Yeah, and there's, there's a number, and they, all of those fall under, under that category of commercial recreation also, there's pretty wide range of the kinds of things you can do.
You know, in, in the staff report on page four at the bottom, you know, and you mentioned this, Lloyd, you know, the city can impose requirements on a specific plan that exceed the mitigation that would be required under CECL to reduce waste and negative effects, and, you know, additional parkland or open space beyond the previously noted Quimby Act requirements as such when needed to achieve consistency with this general plan. So, it's really up to us to put in the general plan, put into the general plan the park and trail requirements that we'd like to see, and then that then would have to be met within the specific plan to be consistent with the general plan.
Correct, there's a provision, you have the standards that are in the general plan now, there's a provision regarding the Baylands, I think it's 25% of the area would be devoted to open space. There's a lot of different standards, and you can then craft them as part of a general plan for the Baylands, saying, this is what we expect out there. With this level of development, we're expecting this level of amenity.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no, that's good, yeah, I'm looking forward to getting into it.
But, if, right at this point, if the, we couldn't change the general plan to a higher standard and have it applied to this application necessarily, unless we're willing to make trade-offs on giving other benefits in the general plan changes on this application. We can't just unilaterally go back and change the rules that they have right now, they're asking for a change of the rules of the, of the general plan for this project, but we don't necessarily need to give, we can't necessarily go back and just change portions of what we want, we'd need to do that more as a give and take.
I think there's, there's two different things.
It's a lawyer question.
Yeah, there's.
It could be.
I'll give the planning question, then we'll, then the lawyer can weigh in. I'll give the planning question, then the lawyer can weigh in. You have a standard right now in your general plan that's far higher than the Quimby Act. It's up around, I think, 18 acres per thousand. So there's a very high bar set for open space, and as, you also have a requirement, 25% of the land devoted to open space. So, it's not a matter of saying, now, we're gonna change the rules. You have a set of rules that, that you would work within.
But because we're looking at a general plan change along with a specific developer plan that they've submitted an application for, we have to make sure that the things that they're out of compliance on in their request versus what our general plan states, that we adjust our general plan to do that, and in that same conjunction, we can make changes that would benefit us also, our request.
Yes. Where, where the application that you have in front of you is not in compliance with the general plan, there's obviously two solutions. One is to have the applicant change the project to comply with the general plan. The second is, we'll modify the general plan to, you know, conform to what they're asking, which is exactly what they're asking to do on the residential use. And then, there's everything in between. So, you have the ability as part of your general plan decision to lay out, these are the rules for the baylands. We believe are appropriate. Any specific plan that comes in front of us needs to do these things, and then it becomes incumbent on the applicant to agree or not agree to modify a specific plan.
I would suggest the city attorney might want to have some comments on the sequencing of that, in terms of, because you do have an active application in front of you that was applied for with the set of adopted general plan policies, and, you know, I think there would be a concern.
Requested.
Requested.
Policies. But they came in knowing what our general plan was.
Exactly.
And where they needed exceptions.
Exactly.
Would our city attorney like to weigh in on that?
Sure.
John makes a valid point, that we have to be somewhat cautious and careful that, notwithstanding the fact that the applicant is asking for the general plan to be changed in certain respects in order for that project to be consistent with it, you, you do have a set of rules that currently apply, and if you were going to change those, you would have to, I think you have to be very careful that you weren't making those new rules so onerous, or so difficult, that the project then becomes infeasible to, you know, to build. So I think there has to be a rule of reason with respect to how you're going to change those rules, and I think as so long as there is a, a range of reasonableness, and I don't know how to define that unless I knew what you were all thinking, but you suddenly couldn't say, you know, 100% of the, of the property now has to be devoted to open space, because that, you know, that's dramatically changing the rules of the game that I don't think we could be supported. But something, something may be a little different than what's currently in the general plan. I think that's probably within your discretion to do.
Because we're updating the general plan. I mean, that, everyone knows that that's, that's part of the process. So, you know, as long as, you're right, as long as we're not doing something that is, you know, basically denying the developer an opportunity to develop his property.
Yeah, I mean, I think certainly as part of the general plan update, there are going to be changes to the general plan that have applicability there and maybe elsewhere in the community. I just think, though, that you have to be cautious about applying or making new rules that suddenly change the, the game dramatically with respect to this particular application, which is pending. If, if the application were pending, you know, you might have a great deal more discretion about that, but given that you do have a pending application, I think you have to proceed cautiously, but that doesn't mean that your hands are completely tied.
Because, in the end, we could require that this plan, this project, be consistent with our general plan the way it is right now.
That is true.
The bottom line is, we could require that to happen if, if we wanted to.
And also, keep in mind that, that even if you felt you were going, or you might not want to go so far with respect to general plan policies, you still have a development agreement to consider, and in a development agreement, you may be able to put into that items that you might not otherwise be able to do through your typical planning process. So, you can keep that in mind as well, that you have, if the developer wants a development agreement, you have some bargaining chips with respect to things that you want as well.
But those would all need to be, even in a development agreement, we would have to have a consistent general plan that allowed for those items to be even discussed in a general plan agreement. So it'd be a, a trade-off or a, a negotiation point, or as far as, well, we may make a general plan adjustment if we got XYZ.
Correct. I mean, your development agreement certainly has to be consistent with your general plan, but I'm saying, in that process, you may be able to push it further than if you did not have a development agreement on the table, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, it does to me. And then, when we're talking about parks and recreation, under the fifth paragraph, Policy 87 and 87A of the Brisbane General Plan Open Space Element, it sets an aspirational goal for the amount of parks and open space at 10.5 acres. And then later, it says the combined result is 18.5 acres of park per 1,000 acres. And can you explain what that paragraph means?
Sure. There's two different standards. One is 10 and 1/2 acres per thousand of mini parks, neighborhood parks, and linear parks. Then there's a separate requirement for eight acres of community parks. So that's how you get to the 18.5.
Okay. But again, that's aspirational, not in our general plan.
No, that is in the general plan. That is the general plan goal, is to have that much parkland.
And then, why would we call it an aspirational goal? Because isn't aspirational meaning it's not required?
I would think, well, the context of that is, with the Quimby Act requirements are much lower, that, the way the EIR looked at it, and this is in the context of the EIR, the EIR did not look at failing to achieve that general plan as having a environmental, physical impact, because the city's, general plan policy is so much higher than the Quimby Act. We use the Quimby Act as what constituted an adverse environmental impact, and that's how we use that to sort of aspirational, what was above the Quimby Act requirement.
So, does that mean that while the SEQUA for the EIR doesn't look at the amount of park space we require, our general plan still requires that and is enforceable? Or does that mean it's not enforceable? Or just not the environmental impacts not looked at?
The answer is yes, I think, to both questions. That means that, that you, it's an aspirational goal, I suppose, and therefore, under certain circumstances, you don't have to apply that. All SEQUA says is that you have a Quimby Act standard, and you have to meet that, and if you, if the project didn't, then you would, you know, have adverse, adverse environmental impacts. But that's a different, you're looking at a different issue than trying to meet the general plan standard, notwithstanding that it's aspirational. That, you can still apply that, it's just that you don't necessarily have to, because it's aspirational as opposed to finite, which is what the Quimby Act requires.
Still not quite sure how that affects us when we're trying to interpret the general plan requirements.
Well, Michael, maybe, maybe just explain that the general plan's a land use constitution, and that's what we go by. That is our law. Am I right? That's true. Yeah.
So, again, I'm still questioning the aspirational portion.
Yeah, I, I don't know why that word was probably chosen back in 1994, but I assume that it, it was intended to give the council flexibility with respect to looking at this issue, so that it didn't mandate, for example, that it had to be this number, and, but it means that that would be, it's sort of like the sustainability issue. It's certainly the things that you would like to get in a perfect world, and means that it's part of your general plan, and just because it says aspirational does not mean that you can't enforce it.
The effect from a planning standpoint, we'll try and put these together. One is, you have a general plan, your Policy 87A, that says, we want, in our community, this much park, 18 and 1/2 acres per thousand population. State law says, under the Quimby Act, you can require three. So part of that aspirational goal is saying, of, looking at that as a goal rather than as a equivalent of a ordinance requirement, is a way of saying, we can, we can and will ask for more on large projects where it makes sense to do so than the Quimby Act says we can. And, and this is one of those situations where you have a property as large as the baylands, particularly in the developer-sponsored scenario, that many dwelling units, that many people, that the minimums under the Quimby Act are not making sense. So, we look at, in the EIR, what is the amount of park that the city wants, which is Policy 87A, and at what point below which does lack of parks start impacting your existing parkland, which is what the Quimby Act is used for, and that three acres per thousand, how that's used in the EIR. Anything less than three acres per thousand is going to start impacting your existing parkland.
Is that what you're kind of getting to, Clark? Was that what you were trying to get to in your questioning?
No. No, mine was, no, I, I just didn't go further down the ladder on that. I knew that that was there, but I just wanted to get the explanation of what the Quimby Act, and how, how the calculation was done. So, so that answered my question, yeah.
So, just to follow up on Teri's question, it sounds like what, what I think she's asking is, if it's only aspirational in the general plan, how is it made to be obligatory? Is it through the development agreement? Like, what's the mechanism to require that level of parkland?
It's, it's actually a lot simpler. You have a general plan policy that says this amount of parks. Is that a reasonable requirement, given the, in terms of the baylands, its physical setting and the uses being proposed?
Okay.
Meaning that even if you didn't have a development agreement, given the scope of the project, you could, you could require...
You can make that case.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Teri, on parks or on recreation? And note, we have 15 minutes left to...
I found my windsurfing question.
Go ahead.
Wind surfing.
We still have, yeah, we still have a number of topics to cover.
Mine's gonna be quick.
Okay.
So, started to ask this last meeting, but now I'm gonna ask it this meeting. So, I know that the staff report kind of discusses, refers back to a lot of the discussion that happened during the planning commission meeting, but I think it's important because of how many people that it seemed like came out for that meeting, based on what I read in public comment, there seems to be, there seemed to be some disagreement with the windsurfers as to what, as, as to the finding that, that the conditions would be less than significant. And, one of the, I'm, I'm reading from the actual, the text, but it says on page three at 18, on days with light winds, 5 to 10% lower winds would make the site unusable. And so, I think it was argued that a 5 to 10% increase was less than significant. So I'm just trying to understand, and if, I know that it's kind of discussed in the staff report, but if you could just walk me through that rationale, because I assume that there are probably a lot of people from that community that may come later, or they may watch this meeting, so it's important, I think, for us to address that.
The, the standards that were used in the EIR, the analysis that was done in the EIR, and the thresholds that were used are the very same ones that were used at Executive Park for the same resource, and is a very common way of approaching impacts on windsurfing in the Bay Area and elsewhere. The issue that the windsurfing advocates had raised, and the associations raised, is, one, that a new threshold ought to be devised that talks about usable days, and then they offer a, a definition of, this is a usable day for windsurfing. We were not able to identify any place in the Bay Area where such a threshold was used defining what is a usable, you know, windsurfing day, because that becomes also subjective. Usable windsurfing day for who? A beginner, a moderate person, expert? And so, that was problematic. It also, there were a number of methodologies that they suggested using, and that have not been used in Bay Area analyses, and so, the EIR used the analyses that have been common throughout the Bay Area. The other thing...
What about for other, other regions? Are those standards used? I know it's good to be consistent with what's being used in our area, but in other areas, do they use different standards for looking at windsurfing, and what would be impactful?
I think as you get outside of California...
There's not a whole lot of...
Those analyses are not, are not common, because unlike, we don't, there's not a SEQUA law that, that forces those kinds of analyses. There were examples that the windsurfing associations used of, this development created these problems, but that type of, SEQUA-type analysis is really, it's not unique to California, but in terms of windsurfing, it really is the most common place. The other thing that, that they requested, and we started asking the question at the last meeting, was in relation to creating a computer model to analyze windsurfing, and there was a lot of comments on that. Why couldn't we just, the city just create a model to analyze windsurfing like you have for traffic? The answer is, and that's part of your packet for tonight, is that, one, the methodology isn't there. The, the software isn't there to accomplish that. We've had 30 years' experience or more with traffic modeling to, to do that. When we set about to analyze traffic for the baylands, we have the SF Champ model to work from. What's being requested here is create a new model utilizing whatever software exists. The problem, two major problems with creating that software or that model. One is, in terms of windsurfing, we'd have to analyze at two very different scales, and there's two different types of models that exist. One dealing with macro-level atmospheric wind, and then another one, how do buildings change wind patterns and create turbulence? Those two models don't relate well together. They're, they're very different, and what would be required would be a hybrid model that can analyze both macro and micro scale, and the technology is a ways away from that. But more telling, at least for us as we looked at it, is with any computer model, once you're done putting it together, we now have a computer model that models something, how do we know whether it's accurate or not? Traffic models are calibrated, watching as development is added, what happens on the streets, and unfortunately, the only way of, of validating a, a computer model for windsurfing would be to test it in the wind tunnel, which is the very technology that they're arguing shouldn't be used. So, the problem with, ultimately, with the, with the computer models, there's no way of validating it.
That was really helpful. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone else? Okay. Let's move on to biological resources. Who'd like to go first?
You know, I, I don't have specific questions on biological resources, but it kind of all ties together to me as far as water quality, hydrology, and seismicity, seismicity, and all that. To me, you know, from, from that aspect, it, it really does, is all this ties together. And, so, you know, I have some very specific questions... And so, you know, I have some very specific questions about some of the stuff, but if not taken as geology or.
Biological?
Biological resources, but it, but it does have an effect on it.
Okay.
Is it okay if I go there with that?
Sure.
And I'm going to use the staff report on this. On page. Start with page 15, under, second paragraph from the bottom. Randy, I'm probably going to rely on you to answer some of this too, because it starts out, according to the conceptual grading plan for the Baylands, and it talks about appendix B in the EIR, Baylands would regrade the low-lying areas by adding fill materials so that the site would be more resilient to flooding and sea level rise. And mostly we're talking about the western portion, which is the former rail yard, right? And it says, the mounted elevation of the former landfill has already raised the area out of the projected 55-inch sea level flood zone. And I think that sentence wasn't necessarily complete, as probably as it stands right now, but Randy, in, in past, you've talked about that in order for anything to happen there in Title 27 to happen, that all of that dirt would have to go down to, almost to where the garbage is, right? Or something, you said to, to develop the compaction rate and then bring it up and then cap it? Is that, can you explain the whole thing again? I'm just kind of paraphrasing, yeah.
Am I on? Okay, here we go. So, certainly, so the primary thing that you're trying to do when you do a Title 27 landfill closure is ensure that there is an appropriate barrier between the underlying municipal solid waste and really surface water? That's what you're trying to prevent from getting in there? Because it's water that gets into the waste that causes it to accelerate its degradation, that creates leachate, which is why we have leachate collection systems around the outside of it. One of the most straightforward ways of doing that is to identify where the existing municipal solid waste landfill layer is, where it ends. So if the developer is unable to demonstrate to CalRecycle and to the Regional Water Quality Control Board that they know that elevation, then they're going to have to expose it and they will have to find it. Now, does that mean they'll have to expose it everywhere? Possibly not. Possibly they can do spot elevations at some grid that's approved in a plan by both of those organizations to do that. If they know where it is now, is it possible that those organizations might say, you have enough dirt between your proposed fill site and the bottom of that, that we can demonstrate that the water's not going to migrate through? That's also a possibility.
But a lot of that dirt will have to be removed, right? Regardless, I mean, right now, I mean, is that, I mean, that's kind of the goal anyway, right?
Well, certainly they have an overage in the millions of cubic yards right now. And it's always been my understanding that part of the developer's plans for that is to take much of that fill and to move it over to the western side so that they can use it as they've always anticipated, that they're going to need at least a three-foot cap over the different contaminants that are in there. It's not, as you all know, it's not the municipal solid waste on the west side of the tracks. It's the remnants of those industrial operations that happened there. But they've been anticipating for a long time that it'll be three feet of fill. They've also anticipated that in order to install Geneva Avenue over the railroad tracks, it's certainly on the west side, they would use that fill to create earthen embankments that would allow it to rise up from its low elevation presently at Geneva and Bay Shore. And to get it up, like, we need like 22, 24 feet of clearance to get the trains and the catenaries for the electric propulsion underneath there.
Yeah, and then in the past, you've also said though that it has to have a certain level of compaction. And right now, it's just soil on top of soil, some of it undocumented, some of it documented on top of garbage, right? That it has to have a compaction rate for engineering purposes, right?
Absolutely. To put a building on it is where the compaction comes in. Really what comes in more with the clay lens layers, and it can be, and I'm not trying to dance around the question, because there's a couple of ways you can achieve in creating an impermeable layer. You can put something in there that's impermeable, like a sheet of plastic, right? That's, the water can't get through that. Most commonly, what you see used is a material that's very heavy in clays. But it's also possible to create a multi-foot deep layer of dirt that's properly compacted enough so that it also effectively becomes impermeable. If you think about it, like, when you've seen us put streets in, we put asphalt cement in, but underneath that asphalt cement, we put in something called aggregate base. So it's three-quarter inch gravel and it's got the appropriate mixture of fines and stuff. And we roll that with compactors and the, and the way, and we make it so hard that one of the, just the casual tests you use is you walk and you try and dig your heel into it. And if you can dig your heel into it, it's not tight enough. So we, so that's, and that's what we call, that's a level of, it's an engineering term, 95% Procter compaction. So if you get it to that level.
Somebody like me digging the heel in or somebody like you digging the heel in, that might be a little.
Somebody like my inspector. Kind of in-between us, right? I know, I'm a little light in the seat. But, so, so there's different ways of doing it, but, but that's the key, is getting them to turn. Now, having said all that, the developer's got a grading plan and he wants to move a lot of dirt around, and he's trying to achieve different elevations. And, you know, generally, the site, sort of the way I understand it is it's, the elevation is at its lowest in the south and it rises as you go south to north. And then if you were looking for a high point from east to west, it's higher at the tracks, where it's on either side of the tracks, and then it goes lower as it goes out towards Bay Shore and towards 101. So, yeah, he's going to move dirt around and, and there'll be some interesting challenges for him to do that.
Well, that's, that's kind of where, I'm, it's kind of where I wanted to start on, the lower portion, right up next to the lagoon, because this all ties together. Where Lagoon Road goes down, say if we're heading towards the Marina, be on the right side with a lower elevation up against it. Now, you go down maybe a foot or two and you're in garbage. That, that's never really been mitigated anything. I mean, they've never done any compaction, anything like that. And then up against the lagoon or a bunch of rocks, there's no slurry wall that I'm aware of in between there. I don't, I don't recall any slurry wall being put, so there's no barrier. And so now we got all the dirt, it's piling up here and it's, you know, as you're doing it, it's kind of like, you know, putting your fist into a bowl of oatmeal, right? It's, you know, it's going to, you're going to squeeze stuff out. Where's that going? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
My favorite thing.
I'm just using that as an analogy, but, you know, you get the graphics that, we have stuff there and I know the Planning Commission asked about, you know, a possible baseline feature of what's happening with the lagoon. They say it's not part of the project, but it kind of is. It kind of is tied in there. You know, I, you know, I'm just looking at the, you know, we don't have any real data on what's happening there. And that portion there is the most untouched from when it was actually closed as a landfill. It hadn't been formally closed really, but, because it, because it never capped, but how, how are we going to deal with that? I mean, how, and I don't know if that's a question for you.
I'll take a first shot at it and then maybe somebody objects. So actually, we do have some data there right now. Probably five to eight years ago, there was some evidence that some leachate was migrating from the former landfill underneath Lagoon Way and out into the lagoon. So they have put a leachate sampling and collection system out there. So we have a pretty solid sense of that. I think right now, one of the things that, that we could say is that because the earth stockpile operation's been allowed to go on for so long, one of the things that's happening is because we've got these large piles of dirt, the material that's underneath it is being compressed and, and very effectively. And also, one of the things that's going for this site is that it's a very mature landfill. Actually, it actually, it was closed in 67 under the laws that existed then, which weren't nearly as comprehensive as laws now, which would require much more work. But because of that, even when you look at it from producing methane, it's, I believe it's off-gassing something on the order of, you know, eight hours a day is all the amount of methane it's producing. So there's not, is there something there? Sure. Do we need to monitor that? Absolutely. Is a part of a closure plan include both preventing water from coming from the surface above, below, and as well as preventing, and as well requiring a plan to ensure that leachate doesn't migrate out along the sides? Yes, that's also a requirement that the regulatory agencies will impose.
Yeah, it just seems, you know, I mean, we kind of deal with that, that that is kind of an area that's not really addressed and to me can be the most problematic as far as the health of lagoon and stuff like that. And so, yeah, I kind of want to, you know, put some thought towards that, you know, that I think that's important, important. It does tie into those biological and geological resources because we all know Lagoon Road, which, you know, unfortunately, we own. And it's like a roller coaster, huh, Terry? When you go out to the Marina, riding along. And we fixed it a couple times. I think when I was originally, you know, elected in council back in the 90s, you know, we paid $200,000 to repave that, scrape it down, and now it's, you know.
I like it like that.
Yeah, Cliff likes it.
We think of it as a year-round traffic calming device, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
The kids like it. They're always going, ooh.
Okay, I'll, I'll just stop there and then, because I guess we're out of time.
Yeah, so let's save our remaining questions until the next session. So we're returned.